All right, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a big crowd tonight, thank you for coming. I wanted to say that the microphones pick up everything, so if we can kind of keep it down if we can. Tonight, Town Administrator Louis George will not be with us this evening, he had a little bit of surgery done, and he'll be back tomorrow at work, I think. Of course, I told him to take another day or two off if he'd like to have it. Earl Pineau will be joining us shortly, he's running a little bit behind. Okay, do we have approval of the minutes of April 15? We have motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All righty. We have a couple budget amendments?
Yes. First budget amendment is number 2015-010. It is recognized $32,543 in a local government insurance trust claim that we received in FY14 but did not extend until the current year FY15. That was for damages to the Historia Collings warehouse.
Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment 2015-010?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Have a second budget amendment, Steve?
Yes, the budget amendment number 2015-011 is to transfer within the Department of Elton Police Department $122,447 in anticipated salary savings into their capital account for the purchase of three police vehicles which were taken out of service during the current fiscal year.
Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment 2015-011?
So move.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, the $122, or we didn't divide that by three, or that's just the cost that's being transferred over it. The cost of being purchased, that's the excess money.
Right, there's, it's not exactly evenly divided by three, there are two marked vehicles and one unmarked. And there is equipment, there's equipment for all three, but they're not all getting the same equipment, but that is the total amount for three vehicles and the equipment for all three to place them in service on the road.
Okay, thank you. In the 15 budget, you had allotted money for those three cars.
Four cars.
Four cars. So the allotted money for three of those four were using for salaries, where's the other money going to be used by?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
You're taking money from salaries.
Anticipated salary savings due to unfilled position budgeted, but unfilled.
But we had budgeted for four cars.
That's correct.
The salary transfer is paying for the three of those four cars.
No, no, this is three additional cars.
We had already purchased the four.
We already purchased the four.
This is the three cars and we just took out of service.
Took out of service due to damages and mechanical. Right. So four were part of the original budget, three have been added by way of this budget amendment.
What three are we replacing?
Well, one was damaged from a accident and two were lost to major mechanical failure.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. 7:05, we're going to have the public hearing on the annexation.
May I apologize for interrupting. On the agenda, financial report.
Whoop. I skipped right around that. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
So move.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none? Aye. All in favor? Sorry. The pollen has gotten me today, I was here all day today and I walked outside and my gosh, I'm so foggy headed right now. It has done me and it's whooped me today. All right, can I have a public hearing now? All right, 7:05, I'd like to call a public hearing on the annexation resolution A1-2015. Let's see, let's see what we're going to do here, we're going to call up pivotal utility holdings. Doing business is Elton Gas. This annexation was introduced and accepted on March 4, 2015, and is presented for adoption at this public hearing. If adopted, this annexation will become effective on June 20, 2015, which is 45 days from the night. This property will be provided sewer service from the town of Elton and the water service will be provided by Artesian Water of Maryland. Okay, would you like to add anything to that?
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dan Speedman from McCrogh. I am here representing Elton Gas for that exact purpose of addition for annexation. The purpose of an annexation is to come into town of Elton and acquire those utilities that you mentioned. The only thing of interest about the property really is that it's currently zoned MH, which is multifamily residential in Cecil County of Houston. The zoning administrator believes that that was a mistake and could have easily been, could have gone back in for a request to have that rezoned, but he believes it's a mistake. It's been industrial use for many years to know, since 1974. So we're asking for it to be zoned, and previous to the rezoning in 2011, it was zoned and one which was light flush. So clears it was a mistake and we're currently requesting that it be zoned C3 by its annex to the town, in the town's services.
Jean, you have any comments on that?
Yes, we received a letter from Cecil County, from Cary, Cary and Horry County Executive, that Cecil County Council Cecil County at their meeting on April 7, 2015 noted to approve the proposed zoning change on the property Tax Map 33 parcel 1020 located at 142 Bellhill Road from the county's high density residential district RM to the town's highway interchange commercial C3 district. So that was approved, the county did approve the zoning change for that, so we're considering change in zoning.
Very good. Anyone from the board have any questions in regards to this resolution? This is a public hearing, and if anyone would like to speak in favor or against this project or this annexation, please recognize yourself, Mr. James Kraus?
James Kraus, 451 North Street, Elton Ground. Mayor, I have a question. The code of the town of Elton says that upon annexations, water and sewer was the way that we sold the ability to expand that opportunity. You mentioned water being provided by Artesian. Does this resolution, I mean, have you amended the code to affect to allow water to come from another party now?
You know, that's a good question, I can't specifically.
Well, you can't do this without the code being amended.
The.
The county awarded exclusive franchise agreement.
That's correct. The county government has given Artesian an exclusivity to a franchise agreement on the north part of Elton.
The county government doesn't control the town's charter.
That is correct.
So I'm just saying that if they're annexing into the town.
Yep.
At least does it say if water was available, then they have to buy it from the town. That's, that's the real, I mean, I'm not against the annexation.
No, 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 I follow what you're saying.
I mean, but the resolution should outline that if water is available from the town, that the town is able to sell that water for them.
And it's a very good point, and I don't know the answer to that, but that's something we'll have to identify.
The hottest suggestion to be tabled is to tell that's resolved.
We sell that water to Artesian that they deliver to, or will be delivered to the property, I mean, 20 percent premium over what they charge us for the water.
Mr. Mayor, I might debate Mr. Rep. Paul because he wasn't here when any of this was even done. I know he works for the town now and understand, and I understand other things happen, but there are rules of code of the town that are supposed to be followed. It's just a matter of protecting, the town's only thing to sell to recruitment of industry, et cetera. I mean, typically, in my experiences over my years, we would tie jobs to annexations if possible, not like we're holding anybody up, but you know, is this going to produce any jobs or is it just going to be land that, is it potentially going to be resold? That's another thing that we would put into resolutions, I mean, that it couldn't be resold, that it's going to be there. What is the purpose of this annexation?
The purpose is for, of course.
Excuse me, Elton Gas would be nice word, that's what I'm, you know.
It would be, and I can't answer your question directly, and I do apologize to the public that I can't answer that, but I believe that there has been, someone would have to tell you specifically if there was a code change with the north side of Elton. Do you know, Jean? I'm looking.
There was not.
There's never been.
There's no town, there's no ability, we have no ability to send water there.
And sir, that's my exact reason for bringing up the point, just let's get things, you know, codified to where that's available.
Yes.
And consequently, if you were to pass this resolution now, any tax payer could go follow suit of court and it's going to be reversed because the code doesn't allow for it, the way it's being presented. But I, and I would, I could also go back to and add that, now that's my opinion, by the way.
Yes, yes.
I'm not, I'm not an authority, it's 27 years, but, but I would certainly want that the, you know, the people being annexed into the town, members of the town of Elton, be buying that water from Elton, I don't care where Elton gets it from, Mr. Rep. Paul, it doesn't matter where Elton gets water from, you know, you then sell it back to whoever's the user. The user should be controlled by the town. That's all I'm, what I'm trying to point out as far as the annexation.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Hearing none, this public hearing is closed, it is 7:13. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, it is 7:13, what's that? Oh, I'm ready, you want to move forward a moment? Do we want to move forward to approve the resolution A1-2015? We have a motion.
I would like to, I personally would like to table it considering the opinion of Mr. Kraus, and I give our attorney a chance to look into it, thank us to make sure that we got the right language in moving forward.
Yeah, I agree, because I, I know this is an unusual circumstances, I am for the project, but we are selling the water to Artesian, there was no water there, they're taking our water, putting it through to that area, so I think our attorney needs to look at this and, before we vote.
Can I just add?
Agreed.
If, if that be the fact, then they should be, that resolution should say to find the water from the town of Elton, not being supplied by Artesian. That, that's my whole point.
Well, the.
You're saying that, that the town's buying the water from, from Artesian.
Artesian is buying our water.
To sell back to them.
To go to that area. So it really is our water, so, but I, like the attorney.
The only thing the town has to offer is water and sewer. I mean, not the only thing, but I mean, it's one of your biggest assets.
Consider it tabled, we have tabled, the public hearing is closed, sir. 7:13, we have a public hearing on the annexation resolution A2-2015. This is an annexation request from Robert G. Johnson and Nancy Johnson, was introduced and accepted on April 1, 2015, is presented for adoption at this public hearing. If adopted, this annexation will become effective on June 20, 2015, which is 45 days from tonight. This property will be provided water and sewer service from the town of Elton. Jean, do you have anything to add to that?
Ditcheners, the property is currently zoned suburban transition residential S2 in the county, and their request is for the town of Elton zoning classification of suburban residential R2, which is consistent with the same zoning.
Very good. Board have any questions in regards to the public hearing on this annexation resolution? No. This is a public hearing, if anyone would have anything to say about this annexation, please state your name and address and let us know. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed at 7:15. Do we have a motion to approve resolution A2-2015?
So move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is the Downtown Festival of Arts 2015 presentation. All right, good evening.
Actually, Andrew Dickinson is making the presentation. Is there a? Is there a? Oh, okay. Well, thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name's Andrew Dickinson, I'm professor of music and performing arts coordinator over at Cecil College, and this is Ingrid Minihane from Minihane's Restaurant. And we're from the Downtown Elton Festival of the Arts, and we're here just to tell you about some work that we've been doing, and over the last few months, and it's really exciting for us to be here because it's taken a lot of hard work for us to get to this point, and we're really excited to share it with you and with the town. So, our idea is to build a festival of the arts that involves arts of all kinds, music and arts, chalk walks, and all kinds of festivities for a day next spring in May 2016. And I'll just give you a quick overview of all the aspects of the festival. The first one would be all the events that we have, we are planning on artists, live bands, musicians, a chalk walk competition, food vendors, and all kinds of artisanal things like wineries, honeys, breads. This should be really exciting to bring in a lot of local people as well as people from outside, and we're expecting to have in attendance, hopefully in the thousands. For the music, we're planning on having three locations, one, there'll be a main stage that will have popular rock bands, and then, and that will be on the corner of North and Main Street. And then, we'd also have two smaller locations at either end of the festival. One would be up at the Arts Space on Main, and then at the Arts Council where we'd have smaller, more intimate acts such as folk and classical music. With the arts, we're planning to have arts of all different kinds, artists coming to show different canvases, different styles of painting, and artists from all over, both local and from regional areas. Chalk walk, I've mentioned that a few times, I just wanted to tell you a little bit more about what that is. It's actually drawing literally on the sidewalk with non-toxic and, you know, paints that are, that do not harm and will wash away eventually. But it's a really interesting creative idea, and we're planning to have people from all ages participate in this competition and create these really interesting, family-friendly products that you can actually watch them create right there in that very day. And it's very, it's really exciting to watch people creating their art right there on the spot. For the food, we're planning to have food vendors and food trucks with all kinds of different, unique things to offer. And all of these, we'll have, we'll have an emphasis on gourmet and ethnic styles of cooking to bring something really new into the community. All of this, the music and the arts, and the food, and all the artisanal stuff, we're planning to have that juried, and people will apply to be able to participate, to really maintain a really high standard of quality. And we're planning to have the festival on Main Street covering a pretty wide range of the Main Street, so North Street would be kind of the center, going up to the Arts Council and then going down to the Arts Space on Main. The, the, we already have a website set up, all the applications are done, and we're actually ready to have people start applying, and we have a lot of ideas for sponsors for the festival as well. And, oh, this is a kind of an outline of what we expect for expenses, and then show you income as well. For the income, we are expecting sponsors in the $10,000 for artist applications, $3,000 to possibly $8,000, and then other income from food vendor applications, t-shirts and raffles and that kind of thing. So we do expect to have, for it to be a profitable, profitable festival, and, and it should eventually cover all the expenses. We are here tonight just to share with you this stuff, also inquiring about what would be needed as far as street closures and police protection and that kind of stuff. And also ask for the possibility of some seed money to get started, a small amount of $5,000, I think is what we were looking for, that could possibly get us started, with the intention that it eventually would become self-sustaining. And with the income that we make from the festival, part of it would go back to the festival itself that we could have it on an annual basis, but we'd also like to put money into beautification ideas for Elton. And so some of these ideas are having greenery, flower baskets, courtyards with seating, some of these are getting into more ambitious projects such as murals, painting, you know, various steps to create a very artistic scene, and, and this one down here, getting more specific, enlarging historic photos of downtown Elton and placing them around to really provide some really interesting things. So we have a lot of ideas for beautification, and we certainly like to give back to the community in that sense as well. In both ways, in both having an annual festival, having Elton known for having an annual festival of this, of these fantastic arts and music and food, but then also year-round really giving back to the community as well with these beautification ideas. Is there anything that you would like to add?
Well, I brought the, we had these cards printed up and we've been handing them out, and I brought some of them up here, and it lists what we're doing, it lists our date and application, so, oh, you have, Mary Jo has one. And the mayor has one. Oh, did you hand them out? Oh, you did, okay, so, but there's more that you could take with you, and I have 2,500 more than at home, so I can leave those here.
So, I have to admit, this is my first time here, so I don't know if there's a formal way to conclude my presentation, but I think that's all I have to say, so, is there, are there any questions?
No, actually, I loved the presentation, and I think the next steps, of course, would be to coordinate with the police department and find out the public safety side of this event, and to find out what we're closing off, and the hours of operation that they would have to provide manpower for, and, so we can put that into the scope of things. But I think it would be a wonderful venture.
I did want to say that we did meet with the Chamber and Alliance, and we do have their support, so, and, and we've been working, Jessica has been wonderful working with us, she actually put the website together for us. We do have a little tweaking to do on the website, but feel free to please go, look at it.
Are you, does anyone from the board have a question?
I think it's a very good presentation as well. Where are you going to locate your chalk walk? I'm impressed with that, I've seen that before, and I just wonder if anything is going to be, 11th Street, what is going to be the specific location for that, what have you thought of yet?
I can, I can answer that. I've already gone down and measured the areas in the sidewalk on Main Street that won't be blocking businesses and entrances to the apartments, but we have sections of sidewalk that are cordoned off in different sizes for, for that purpose.
Right, the chalk walk brings about a lot of creativity and it's good to have a space like that, thanks.
The, first of all, thank you, it's, it's an awesome business model, it's laid out appropriately with the expense and revenue side. The seed money I heard was $5,000, is that right? Not to include any type of man-hours or anything, so the, the town's exposure would just be the man-hours and the seed money $5,000. You had said that to be self-sustaining. In your projections, I'm assuming after the first year, I mean, if this is a hit, you would be self-sustaining thereafter.
That's right.
And it would just be the man-hours of EBD and DPW.
Correct, that's our intention.
Do you, this coming together is obviously a business adventure for a lot of businesses downtown along with Cecil Community College, is the, who would the check be made out to? Is there, is there a nonprofit, does Cecil Community College, is it a personal, is it a person? How is that going to be handled?
Sure, we've been working with the Elton Alliance, and my understanding is that it could be funneled, funneled through the Elton Alliance as one of their projects.
Because this is a new project, and everybody, it's a new thing for everybody, we haven't put any legal entity together, and the Alliance offered to help us in that way, let's see how it works the first year, if it works, I think we should put something together, yes, to create more events or go forward with this event. So for this year, the money or everything will go to the Alliance.
And for me, I mean, it's an adamant, yes, I absolutely love the idea, and again, this is what I've been asking for as far as a business model put together, and let's see what we can do. Has anything been done like this in a, in a small town like ours, that you say you have the projection of 2,000 people? What avenues or vehicles are you using for, for media besides social media? And have you done this before somewhere else, or modeling after somebody else, that you say that should bring in this?
Well, I'm the chair of the committee, and as Arts and Entertainment District for Elton, the chairman of that, and a member of the Elton Alliance, and the Arts and Entertainment falls under the Elton Alliance. What, what we're hoping is that we will continue with this under the Elton Alliance, because they've done Fall Fest every year, and that, that's a festival that has a large draw of people. So they have a lot of back, you know, history with knowing how to put something like this on, and have been using the platform of the Elton Alliance website to use that as the website for the DPA project. So, so it's kind of like we're not trying to rework the wheel, but build on the arts side of the Arts and Entertainment District.
And also, we asked for the seed money to start with advertising, because that's one of the things that we know is very important, which would be print advertising, working in the billboard advertising, just a lot of push in that direction and get things out early to get particularly artists and students and the food truck vendors to sign up, so we have a big enough draw for that, to get that 2,000.
I appreciate that it's a year away. I was, I was under the assumption it was a couple weeks, and I was extremely concerned to destroy it, because there's a lot going on, but then I saw 2016, and that's, I appreciate the time and effort that's been being put into this. That's all I had.
I just want to say that I was listening to you saying about the festival, similar to the Fall Fest, one of the things that I questioned with Cecil Community College, I saw where your points of entertainment, your music, was when I'm going to be at the site of the college as one, at one point, because, really why I'm saying that, during the time of Fall Fest, we tried to tie in unity in the community and have that connected with the Fall Fest to expand that area for entertainment, for the district of the entertainment area. And I would like to see that side of the street being utilized as far as bringing participants down and involving them into the downtown area, because Cecil College is part of the downtown business district area with entertainment, and I didn't hear you say that was one of the points.
No, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's, that's something that I'm really concerned with as well. And for the main hours of the festival, it would be on the Main Street, the areas that I showed on the slide, but after the festival, there would be events going on at Cecil College, and also continuing at Minihane's as well, so we could tie it in that way, I think, even if it's not during the day, there could still be events going on in that area. Because I totally agree with you, and that's a conversation that I have with a lot of the Arts and Entertainment District as well, is getting people down to the college there.
And also, the, we anticipate the growth of this festival, because typically they start out on one street, and then it becomes two streets, and then it becomes four streets, especially when it's, hopefully what we're, we try to do is put together a quality Especially when it's, hopefully what we're, we try to do is put together a quality festival that will draw the artists and musicians and food. And when you have that, then people come.
Normally, you have, I'm sorry, normally you have a band down on Main and Bow. Normally, there's a band there and people filter up as far as to the hospital, but then if they cut across and back into Main Street. And I'd like to see the thing just where it would be a big block party.
Mary Jo, you have any?
No, it's a great thing for the downtown and for the Arts and Entertainment District. We need to do more for the Arts and Entertainment District and this is a perfect example of everyone getting together and pitching in to do it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Okay, Town Administrator Rob Alt's going to say a few things here. Okay, we have a resolution, R-5, 2015. This resolution provides for the disposal of any real or personal property of the town of Elton that has been declared a surplus by resolution of the board. This resolution will identify nine vehicles from the EPD and DPW and a tractor from DPW which will be sold at auction. So I have a resolution here. I don't think I have to read the resolution, or do I?
I'll go ahead and read it.
Resolution R-5, 2015, disposable, disposal of surplus property. This resolution sounded clear, declare certain property of the town of Elton as surplus and authorize the disposal of the property. Whereas the Charter of the Town of Elton, Article 8, C-13-1, provides for the disposal of any real or personal property of the town that has been declared surplus by resolution of the board. And whereas the following town-owned vehicles have exceeded their respective service lives due to age, mileage, and/or general condition and are recommended for disposal as surplus property. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor commissioners, the following vehicles are declared surplus property. There's a list of nine here that I'm not going to get into the VIN numbers. That was one, two, that the town administrator shall hereafter dispose of the aforementioned vehicles by sale. And that the funds of the sale of the aforementioned vehicle shall be deposited into the general fund with the exception of the funds from the sale of the 1995 Ford tractor, which will be deposited in the sewer fund. Do we have a motion to accept R-5, 2015?
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, now we have a proclamation that I'd like to read. It's Proclamation P-7, 2015, it's Kids to Parks Day. The Mayor Commissioners of the Town of Elton, Proclamation Kids to Park Day. Whereas the National Park Trust has designated May 16, 2015, as the Fifth Annual National Kids to Parks Day. And whereas National Kids to Parks Day empowers and encourages childrens and their families to get outdoors and to visit America's parks. And whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks to offset the decline in park attendance over the last decades. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active life to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension. And whereas the National Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas the National Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Now therefore, I, Robert J. Alt, by virtue of the authority vested me and mayor of the Town of Elton, and on behalf of the board commissioners and the citizens of our community, do hereby proclaim to participate in National Kids to Park Day and encourage our residents of the Town of Elton surrounding areas to invest time on May 16, 2015, to take their children in their eyes to a neighborhood, state, or national park. Do I hear a motion to accept proclamation?
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Motion carries. I have a quick question on that. How are we going to disseminate that information to the taxpayers?
It'll be on the website and also Parks and Recreation is advertising that they're actually having a Kids to Park Day.
Okay, I have a couple of things. It's time for me to do a report. I think that the water bills that went out for the month of May, I think everyone will start to see the 11% decrease if you received a water bill in May. But starting this past cycle, which actually started May 1st, so you'll start to see the 11% decrease that the town board voted on a couple of months ago. Michelle, please take note that we want to have John and Louis take a look at that charter change if we have to make it in regards to selling of water outside the area. It's a very valid point. On, I guess it was Saturday, or I guess it was late Saturday, I went by the farmer's market here and around the corner. And I actually mentioned to you earlier, Michelle, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention, that there was some leftover boxes and pallets of wood underneath the farmer's market by one of the users of the farmer's market. And I, I don't really know if that was the intent to allow them to keep their empty boxes and their pallets of wood there because they're coming back the next day. But I think it's something that everyone should think about. I think that we're going to go ahead and move forward and send them a note and say that's not our intent. Once you're done there that day, you clean up your mess and you move on. You come back the next day and you do it. And I think something else we need to take a look at is actually the fees at the farmer's market. Last year, the Town of Elton collected a total of $350 for the full year of the farmer's market. And we've got some full-time vendors down there that are very appreciative of doing business with the Town of Elton. But quite frankly, for 300, they're probably paying under $100 at that for the whole year. We may want to take a look at that. I don't, I'm not sure if that was our intent when we built the farmer's market, that's a full-time person.
But previously, they, there was a letter sent to them that they need to clean up at the end of the day because boxes are just helpless, skeltered down there and it'd most present up a lot of, to make them clean up.
Okay, on Saturday, May 16th, if anyone would like to take their kids to a park day, the Elk Landing is having an open house from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The, we had actually some water damage in the Hollinsworth House during the winter, or last winter. And we were able to get, finally get all the work done, but it's going to be open for tours again. And this is kind of the kickoff open house and it's Saturday from 10 o'clock to 2:00. So everyone is invited. All right, I've got another stat here. I wanted to mention that the, each year, the Maryland Insurance Administration sends to the Town of Elton a guide for natural disasters. This guide is something that they drop off, plenty of these to our town, and we have them available to the public at the administration office. So if it's, anyone has any interest to pick one of these up, please stop by and get one. It's actually, I've read through it and it tells you how to prepare for possible disasters and what to happen if you did have one. We also received a letter from Mr. Ron Woltrip, who couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted me to give his response that he just wanted to say, "Great going, Town of Elton. Appreciates coming to the meetings. He's sad that he's missed this meeting." But I thought it was very nice of him to send us a letter at least, saying he was going to be absent. I expect that from everyone here. If you don't make the meeting, please give me a note. With that, the floor is opening. Ms. Mary Jo?
Okay, I'm going to add to your natural disaster book. It is also available online at insurance.maryland.gov. So if anybody wants to get it online, they could do that as well. And I also want to address someone in our audience, Mr. Lemon, who is out there. There he is. I did receive a price for the downtown LED lighting. It's not an official quote, but I am going to, I do want to announce, for a 45-watt LED retrofit kit put in and the old one taken away, it's $315 per light without the rebate. They're checking on the rebate prices. I get that. I'll have a quote to give to Louis and Dan and everyone else and we'll go from there. So I just wanted to bring that up. Also, on Saturday, I was driving by, down Delaware Avenue, and there were three children jumping off the bridge into the water. So I know it's state highway, but I know people have done it years ago, but it's not deep enough. I think we really need some signage there. No, really, it's dangerous. So if we could put some signage, get the state highway and see what kind of signage could go there. And I was actually going to mention the farmer's market as well. One vendor keeps it very clean. The other leaves all those boxes and it looks awful. So I hope we continue to do something about that. That's it.
Thank you. Earl?
I just wanted to say I attended the 12th Annual, 12th Recital for the Parks and Rec at the Elton High School. And it was excellent program. On May 2nd and May 3rd, Parks and Rec had the 12th Dance Recital. And it was estimated over 500 people each day attended. There were 160 dancers in 25 different classes that Parks and Rec held. Ms. Amanda and Mrs. Morgan, who were the instructors, done a great job instructing ballet, jazz, tap, hip-hop, I think it's pointy, or point, point, and lyrical dancing, which I have to say, there was one dance in there that when a young lady was dancing, you could almost hear almost the words coming from her dance. And I was really impressed. So to go from one day to me being here Saturday and Sunday, there's a big improvement for me because I probably would have been rather golfing. But it really was so good that it was entertaining, so I came back the second day. So I just want to let you know that Parks and Rec is doing an excellent job with their dance programs and hoping we can support to expand that for some years to come. And then I know we talked about the Employee of the Month. I'm hoping to get something out by the end of this month so we can have our first Employee of the Month recognition. So we're going to push for that, to make sure that happens this month. Then you are touched based on the kids to Park Day at Meadow Park. I'd like to invite everyone to come and visit maybe 16th, ahead of time when they start to, not sure whether ahead of time when they're not, but on, maybe 16th, invite everyone to be out there because I think I've been out there three years now. It's been a real good program that's been held out there and I think Chick-fil-A and some other places, people are going to be out there and it's a free event. So bring your kids out and have a good day at the park.
Very good. Charlie?
Dan, is it possible to get a couple more public notice signs out the Meadow Park? You got one on the, on the beginning, the far end. Could it be possibly on either side, where it talks about people having dog licenses and no open fires and no camping? And that way, the whole park is protected and people see that when they go out there. And also, there's a sign behind the Acme, Town of Elton sign that is disfigured or discarded. Maybe that needs to be replaced, stated as Elton property and what you can do and can't Secondly, there will be a police recognition, I guess, being the newspaper next week, that the Elton-Meadle-Stereo Alliance will be acknowledging the public service of the police in Cecil County and the State Troopers. I know they sent an invitation to the board members. Some have responded and I believe there are one that is not, but want to remind you and the public as well, it's very difficult at this time. Most of you know that being law enforcement, it's not an easy task. And certainly a lot of us seen what happened in Baltimore, noted that, because not bringing ugly face here. And lastly, Chief, I was on 40 last night about 9:30 and I guess I witnessed police chasing each other up and down either side of the highway and it was something to see. Then there was an accident, I guess, at 2:13, when a man was trying to either avoid or to get out of the way of a police chase and he got rammed. And I guess there was another accident simultaneous with the guy you were chasing. Is that the story or what is the story?
Well, that's, that's about it and much. Without going into great detail, we weren't involved in the accident. So I don't have all the...
It was a State Trooper car that hit the guy?
Yes.
Right. That's it.
Very good. DJ?
Dan, March 16th, we want to be ready for the sand and volleyball nets, also the basketball nets and everything for Park Day. And Chief, Operation Saturation, how is that been?
It's been great. In fact, I can tell you that just in our first month, reports of assaults are down 83% from the same time last year. And our overall, our overall calls for service and reported crime down, there's down about 37%. That's just in the first month. It's been pretty successful.
And there's plans to keep that going?
Absolutely.
And definitely, I hope.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Steve, I, I had heard that the 21st, I think it's Thursday this month, that the gentleman's going to be here with the water study for preliminary stuff, asking questions. Is that right?
That's correct.
All right. Can you send me an email of what time that was? I'd like to sit in on that. He didn't remember what time it was.
Please, 1:00.
Can you just send me an email just to confirm that? Thank you. And two things, I was looking at the charter for the budget on section C-8-7, C-8-8. And I didn't see anything in there about the introduction of the first draft of the budget. My understanding is that we're going to get the budget no later than Friday. Is that right, sir?
Yeah, I finalized everything today and you should have it Thursday or Friday, probably Friday. Friday in your package.
The green bar with highlight would like it in the...
My concern is just looking at the, the dates of everything. If we get it on Friday, then we're going to have roughly four days, we talk about it on a workshop. My understanding also is that there would be an adoption or something on the 20th, correct?
That's not correct.
Okay. Give me the timeline so I know exactly.
It will be introduced on June 3rd.
All right. So there going to be any other discussions on the budget other than the 13th before we introduce it?
Well, the 3rd, we introduce on 3rd.
Or excuse me, 3rd, excuse me.
Be introduced on 3rd. The public hearing will be on the 3rd. We'll be advertising for the public hearing on the 14th and the 18th of May.
I get it. Two weeks after we...
It'll be introduced on 3rd and ordinance has to be adopted no sooner than six days and no later than 60 days will be adopted.
I guess my problem that I had is that there's actually not adequate time for the board or a taxpayer to actually look and dissect the budget. I'd like to have something that I don't know if it's an ordinance, I don't know if it's what you would specifically call it that we can put in the charter that would give at least 60 days before the first introduction or the first draft for everybody to look at it. And that would be, if you do 60 days before the introduction, that would be 30 days before the first time we actually talk about it. This way, we can sit down, we can actually dissect it. The taxpayer has every right to take a look at it and see, see what's, we're proposing or the mayor's proposing. And then before... or the mayor's proposing. And then before we go in and we sit down and we start discussing everything, it just seems right now, and I'd like to get consensus of the board. Because I think I need the consensus of the board to actually move on, put an ordinance together, correct? So I guess I'd like to have 60 days. I'd like to have an ordinance that's 60 days prior to the introduction that the taxpayer and the board members have a first draft of the mayor's budget.
What would that, what would that date be, 60 days in advance?
It would be 60 days in advance of.
June 30th?
Days prior to June, July 1st.
So it would be May 1st.
No, then it would be, it has to be July 1st. That would be before we start discussing it. So to say 90 days before it has to be turned in, that would put you at April 1st, right?
I don't believe that would be possible. I don't think we did. I just got the revenue numbers. The actual from the, as accurate as we could get them.
And my only concern is there's just not enough time. I mean, all this work full-time jobs. And then also we're, we're in here, we're trying to dissect everything that's going on. The, the water, the sewage, the general fund, the capital investments, the whole nine yards, and making suggestions of where it cuts. It can't be done in four days and then all of a sudden the 13th, we're going to sit here and talk about it. You're going to find the low hanging fruit, but you're not going to find the deep cuts that we need.
You've got from, you've got from this Friday until June 3rd, which gives you one, two, three, 20 something days with the budget in your hands.
The problem is that we introduce it on the 3rd, right?
That's correct.
Okay, we, we as a board discuss it one time before that, only once. Because if we do that anytime before that according to the charter, then it's, then it's illegal quorum, correct? So that means that we introduce it on the 3rd. The only other time we'd be able to really talk about it and hash anything out, or we can do it in the public meeting on the 3rd is fine. But then on the 10th, we would have to have a workshop and then the 17th. We would actually vote on it.
The bottom line is, is it's the mayor's budget. And I'm going to introduce the budget and then you'll have on July 3rd, well, you'll have an opportunity at the workshop to entice me to make cuts or add things to the budget. And then on June 3rd, we will introduce it after we discuss it. But I'm actually giving you from the 13th to June 3rd before I actually propose it to the public. But if I have three votes moving forward, in any manner, we're going to move forward with it on June 3rd.
I would, in good conscience, you know, I would, I would ask for a consensus vote right now of, to let you know that where each commissioner stands, I, to not exceed pulling from the general fund more than what we did in fiscal 15. And that's, that was $753,000 we had to pull from our savings account just to cover our checking account.
You will, you will absolutely have an opportunity to vote on the budget on.
Well, I'm allowed to ask for a consensus, right?
Yes, yeah, you can, you can, you can ask for a consensus and then the board will tell you whether or not they're going to support not putting that in there. But that does not mean I'm not going to put it in.
That's true, absolutely. I just want to make sure that you know where everybody stands. I, you and I haven't discussed it. I don't know if you and other people have discussed it. Does anybody else want to stand next to $753,000? No more than $753,000. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. There was a couple other things I wanted to mention. Sigley Firehouse is hosting their awards banquet on Saturday. Also on June 3rd, we're going to have a housing coalition, our first meeting to talk about the homeless in our community. We're going to host that at noon and I think invitations will be starting to go out on that.
What date is that?
June 3rd. June 3rd, it'll be at noon. Dan, you sent me an email in regards to fishing tournament for the Bass Masters Tournament. What was the date of that? It was Tuesday?
August 11th.
August 11th. And can you tell us a little bit about, were they looking at stocking the pond again?
They were, they were looking at stocking the pond with like a high grit sunbath, which won't reproduce but for people to catch. And they're reaching out to the Bass Masters people now for volunteers. If they all gets together, I'll report against the board.
So our thinking with that was we've got the Bass Masters tournaments coming into Cecil County. And on that Tuesday, we want to host an event here in Elton where we could even maybe have some of the professionals here helping our children fish, teach them how to fish. So that's going to be on that date. So I just wanted to mention that to you. We also have on, tomorrow is the National Day of Prayer at 12:00 noon in the courtyard of the Elton Courthouse. So anyone that could attend, is that, you just attend and have a group prayer or is it just everyone?
Group prayers. I'm actually doing a prayer for elected officials in Cecil County. But there's lots of different groups, all the different churches are there.
Very good. Okay, it is time to open up the floor for public comments. I have a list. We'll go in order and then anyone that wants to speak after this is certainly welcome to. We've got Mayor Fasona, 38 Leewood Court. Wants to talk a little bit about Public Works, I believe. Come on down there.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
Yes, one of the topics I want to talk to you about, and I think it might be one of your favorite topics, and that's grass clippings. And I know you're trying to find ways that we can get, get rid of that and work around it. Today I witnessed some things, but this is how, it's been a problem even when I was sitting in your chair. I've got some pictures and I'd like to show them to you. And, you want them, one by one?
Yeah, the association got another two.
I'll go by one. Okay, the first one, picture one, that's in front of 24 Transom Court there, okay? It's been there for two weeks, okay? Take a look at that. I want to buy, take a look at these. And picture two is in front of 28 Transom Court, which has been there for two weeks. Now, how I know that is that the wife and I walk around the development. Last week, they did come around, they picked up the grass in front of my place, okay? That evening, we walked around the development, walked down that street and that, those clippings were still there. We couldn't figure out why it wasn't picked up, okay? Today, they came around and picked up the stuff again in front of my house and walked down there and guess what? They're still sitting there. They weren't picked up. The truck went right.
Could there be a car in front of this debris?
No, probably not. And picture three, that's the, the winter mall. Because that's the entrance to Leewood Court, just as you come around the corner, right there by the store main. They picked everything up on my street, right in front of me, there was about five piles, so on the curb. They picked them all up, drove right around there and just went right past that pile. Big as life. They picked ours up, but they missed that pile, okay? Can't understand why. On page four, that's on Wheelhouse Drive. And that's also been sitting there for two weeks, okay? Because we walked the development off and on. And picture five, a Christmas tree. A little early for Christmas, I think, though. But it's still sitting there and that's been there for two weeks, okay? Picture six, there's a driveway by my house that goes back to the open space. The gentleman was picking up the clippings and used a shovel, okay? He picked up the little pile next to it and you can see how they started picking that pile up, but they left the pile there. They didn't finish it, sweep it or nothing. And page seven is the end of Transom Court. That's a huge pile of debris there that's been sitting there for two weeks as well. So I don't understand. I mean, I know it's a problem, but, and I heard you mention it, I've mentioned it. When the guys go around, they see that stuff. And by the way, the truck was not full. It was not full at all, okay? So I'm just wondering why and what, why we can't get this stuff picked up. And I know it's a problem, Mayor. I know you're trying to eliminate it. But we still have that problem. And if they do it in my neighborhood, I'm just wondering what your other neighborhoods are looking like. And the last picture is, nothing really had to do with the grass clippings, but I just wanted to bring your attention. In fact, that's behind the dribble court, behind my house, along the tree line. I sent that picture to Louis on August the 28th. Mentioned that fact because it looks like it's a hangout for kids and I don't want something like that to start happening in our neighborhood where the kids may gather and do whatever, you know, start something or sitting out there trying to get high on something. That's just not a good sight. And he did send it to Dan and as of today, it's still sitting there. I just don't want anything like that to start happening in our neighborhood. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, let you know, okay?
Yes.
Appreciate it.
So where is this picture from with the basketball and the stools that was sitting there?
That's right behind our dribble court down, you know, where the tree separates turn crest and the next neighborhood over. I think it's Bier neighborhood.
Is that private property or is that public property?
That's, it's probably on the borderline. I know we went in there with, once I was there, we had a clean up days. We'd go down there and clean it all up. It's also a drainage area, which they're blocking the drainage because that water runs down there. So also need to clean that out so we can have a quick clear flow on the border.
Thank you. I can tell you these pictures will not go unnoticed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Lemon, 103 Walnut Lane, come on down.
Thank you. I just want to get up to date on some things. You already opened up the first question, which is the budget. So I've got some dates. You say you're going to discuss the budget at next week's workshop?
Next week's workshop.
Now, can, can we get some of the copy, the printed copies that you get? We come to the workshops and you guys get this distribution of paperwork and we listen, but we can't see anything.
The, I don't believe that we can on this initial.
Why not?
It's, it's all concept at this point.
What difference does that make?
Well, I just don't, I, I don't think it's a finalized product to be able to give out to the public at this point.
Well, we give it back to you. We could sign in and give it back.
Now, that's a good point.
What's wrong with that? I'm not, I'm not one of the, I'm not interested in that. One of the papers or publicity or anything. I'm just interested in the budget.
I will have Steve in council give us some direction on that. If we can, we absolutely will.
Okay, because these workshops are really interesting. But you sit here and you, you hear a lot of stuff, but you don't see what you guys are looking at. So you really can't always tie it. And the.
And while we're talking about workshop, real quick, I wanted to mention that we do need one to have that workshop at 3 o'clock. Can we start the workshop at 3 o'clock next week? I've got, at 3 o'clock. You're here with you guys or? You're in Boston.
Well, he won't make it at 3.
DJ, can you make it? I've got. It's, it's at 4 o'clock normally, but I'd like to bump it up an hour if we could. Because we need that much time, is there anybody else? No, actually I've got Columbia Bank coming in to talk about the guarantee program. So we have one workshop. Share with somebody else. For 15 minutes. I'm sorry, Mr. Lemon.
That's okay. And I've already picked up, I heard this figure, $750,000. So I'm in DJ's camp. It shouldn't be over $750,000. And I'm prepared to do what I can do to keep it going. And I, I know you're prepared to go beyond that. I think we need to, in all governments, we need to have fiscal discipline. And that, that should start with Elton and go elsewhere as far as I'm concerned. So I'm, that's another, that's was one of the most important things I want to bring up is that we, we need to. Last year, the mayor last year went around to the different departments and had them reduce their budgets to get, let's say, to a, to a figure. And I don't know, well, I, when I was at the workshop and I listened, I said that it would be, I could see where it was a million dollars over. And I, at that time, I didn't really know what I was talking about, but I can see it's at least that or more. So just taking guesses before. But I think that's very important that we, so you've heard it from me now and you hear from me again. Do we have, in this year's budget or in this year's plans, do we have an infrastructure plan? Water, storage, streets, anything like that? It seems to me that we have, you know, emergencies and problems and nobody's at fault necessarily. We just need to have a plan. And this does cost money, but we need, we need to have a, a plan to, to look at the whole infrastructure, water and all, because it's all old and whatever. And so I guess that's a question. Do we have anything like that or are we thinking about something?
We had a proposal by Severn Trent that came in and there was a five-year plan discussing the improvements that we need to be making to our water plant and water system, our sewer plant and our sewer distribution. And those things will be implemented or attempted to be implemented.
Okay. I want to thank Mary Jo for the lighting. Mary Jo is always very good at getting things done and I appreciate that. I don't think you said that this, this lighting, the cost of lighting, most of it will be paid for by the power company, right?
Yeah, and the rebate, the same way we did this building.
Yeah, the way you did the building.
They're waiting to hear back for the rebate.
And I, I think that's a wonderful program if you can get it set up. I like that a lot. I just want to make one comment on body cameras. And I think you all know all this already. And I heard on the, read the paper, heard on the TV that the government has a, a program out to support small cities with grants for body cameras. And if we don't, if we're not on top of that, I'm suggesting that we should be. Because they are expensive and I'm a big supporter of body cameras. So I'm just saying that the President, President Obama has set up a program and I don't know where it stands. I think he made the first announcement in January and I don't know where it's going right now, but I think it's important for you guys to look into it if you haven't done that.
We have actually had conversations with the chief today about the body cameras and there was a, a grant opportunity for, was it $20 million? Yeah. That was United Stateswide. And I believe the ranking is, as you said, the smaller municipalities would rate first before you get to the larger municipalities. And then there's also a grant process through Legit, which is our insurance company that will give us a little small stipend toward it. But nowhere close enough to pay for all the body cameras.
But you guys are on top of it, that's why I mentioned. Where do we stand on the school presentation that's this month?
The school presentation is, is still scheduled. I forget the date.
May 28th.
Pardon?
May 28th.
May 28th, there's going to be a session in the morning and a session in the afternoon. First period, fourth period, that's our first block, 4 o'clock. So we plan to be there.
Do we have a, do we have a plan laid out?
Louis has a plan laid out, yes.
Louis has a plan?
Right.
We actually have the plan and I did the presentation to the Cecil business leadership. We're going to use that same plan. And as earlier today, I gave Michelle. Uh, we're going to use that same plan, and, uh, as, uh, earlier today, I gave, uh, Michelle the, the worksheets, the, uh, the tests, and, uh, she's going to retype the answers so that we'll have an actual key to make sure that we're all on the same page when we answer those questions, but, uh, the board will have that in the next day or so, I'm sure.
Okay.
Dan, we'd like to send one to Mr. Lemon. Could we send him that presentation?
Why don't you do that?
We can do that. Not the budget, not the budget, but sending, uh...
Well, you can send it to me, and I'll sign off and send it back. If I've read it, and copied it at home. You all just mentioned guide for natural disasters. I think I've been told that you, uh, that you already have an emergency contingency plan, or something like that, if, uh, if you have a terrorist attack, or something like that.
We do.
The town has it. Now, thinking about what happened in Baltimore, do you have a riot plan?
Well, I'd have to defer to the, uh, Chief of Police, but I know that he has. We actually discussed some of that again this morning, and, uh, he's well-equipped.
We're, we're prepared. I mean, nobody's prepared for something of that magnitude, uh, especially when they, the way that it happened, it's just, uh, it was rather spontaneous. There was really no warning that they were going to have the amount of people that they had, and, uh, so, think if they'd had a, uh, warning ahead of time, they'd have been better prepared.
Well, where I'm coming from, and I think you're already there, is, it's important to have laid out all your contacts and what you have to do if something happens. And, uh, we've all seen enough of Baltimore to know that there's a right way and a wrong way, and, uh, it's, it's, it seems to me that, uh, even though it would be pretty remote here, I would still think we should be prepared, because sometimes things that are remote happen, so, it's, I'd like to go on top of that. The other thing on Baltimore is that, uh, in my opinion, even if those, uh, people look for jobs, there are no jobs there. And, uh, I'm just wondering, uh, if we can, here in Elton, if we can work with merchants, or talk to merchants, or find out, uh, a list of merchants that might have summer jobs available, or somehow try to tie summer jobs in, try and tie people in that need summer jobs to summer jobs that might be available, and this kind of thing. That's part one. Part two would be to encourage local business to spend a little extra money, maybe, and hire some of these guys, because part of the discussion lately has been, if you, uh, if you have a summer job, you learn a lot of things. You learn work discipline, you learn to show up on time, all this kind of stuff. I think that's pretty important, and, uh, I'm just starting to think about that after what I've seen lately. But I'm, I'm just saying, in, uh, in the town here, if there's some way we could connect, connect businesses with this, uh, with the importance of this, even if they, you may have to stretch a little bit, and then, uh, maybe through the churches, or schools, or something, find out kids that, uh, need employment, and I think that's a, would be a good thing to do. And it doesn't necessarily have to just stick to Elton either. I had a granddaughter that worked two summers in Maria's down in Chestertown, it's a just big city, that kind of thing. Then you have the transportation, but I'm saying there's, there's, uh, there is jobs available if people know about it, that kind of thing. I'll settle on that.
You have to be the county to shop local, hire local. That would be a great thing.
Anyway, I, ever since what I've seen on the TV, I'm concerned about it. And the best way to overcome concern is to do something about it. That's enough.
All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Lemon, I just got a comment for you. I know you brought up the, uh, the thing about the, um, work sessions that we have, and not being able to see the, uh, material that we're using. I hate to say, go back to the old school where we're using the overhead projectors with pieces of paper so people can see it, but, uh, there should be a way we could be able to tie into putting our paper on the computer and showing it on the screen.
That's a good idea.
At a work session.
That works.
That would give you a little more opportunity to see what we're dealing with.
So, you're going to ask me to do a PowerPoint for this?
No. I'm just, I'm saying...
You're probably very good at PowerPoint.
I'm saying on, on, on his behalf, as a tax payer.
And you know something that's a very good point, Earl, and I think that that's something we'll try to accomplish by that date.
It doesn't have to be every piece of paper, but the important paper.
No, I think the highlights and, uh, well, listen, if we can get it up there, and I want to be as transparent as anyone here in this town, and, uh, everyone's opinion is extremely important to us.
We've got one week, right? You want 60 days, you only want one? That's pretty bad.
What did you get in the past? Thank you. Okay, I think Mr. Speakman had left. Did he, was he fellow from McCray?
Yes.
Okay. Polly Weber?
Sheila.
Sheila? Tom Helfrich?
Hey.
Hey, Tom.
How are you?
Coming up. Tom lives at 114 Harstone Drive.
My name's, uh, Tom Helfrich. I'm the owner, president of Harstone Lawn Services here in Elton, and, uh, listened to some things tonight. Grass is dear to my heart, and one of my favorite sayings is, "I cut a lot of grass," and I do cut a lot of grass throughout this free state area. And, uh, I see things that some of you guys probably don't ever see concerning grass. But, um, maybe, uh, some of the local landlords that I see around this town and around Cecil County, uh, maybe they ought to chip in with somebody and buy a mulch more. Maybe they know the advantages of what grass clippings do to a lawn. They're very, very good to leave one alone. The other thing is, uh, you guys do an outstanding job. I'm pretty pleased with it. I've cut a lot of properties for the town because the grass got a foot, two foot tall because people didn't cut it.
Right.
That's not, that's not anybody's fault. That's that, either that landlord, or that owner, that resident is not doing his job. And I can see it, and I can take you right here, right now, and get it. But that's not why I'm here. I've been, I'm the type of guy who will tell you like it is. Uh, I'm straightforward, I'm an honest person, I work hard, uh, for what I do, and, uh, I just got one comment to make. Uh, I work with the Department of Public Works on this project, getting these trees in the ground, and I want to tell you guys something. You can talk all you want about some of these guys on the Department of Public Works. I've seen them. I see them around town. I, I can tell you some horror stories. Everybody's human. But these guys did an outstanding job working with me, coordinating, and getting these trees in the ground. I thought they turned out beautiful. And I can't tell you how many comments I heard in my travels that how well these trees look. And it's my job, and it's going to continue to be my job, to work with you guys to help make Elton beautiful. And it can be done. But I want to let you know, those guys work hard. Got some good help from the Department of Public Works. Dan Hanley, he probably takes more abuse here than a lot of people realize, and he's working with me, and I have no problems with him whatsoever. And I think he needs to have a little recognition when he does a good job, and I hope he gets that, and I want him to give him some of that. And I appreciate working for the town of Elton. I appreciate everything you guys have done for me. So, that's really all I got to say right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down. 227 Hollingsworth. Oh, everyone's coming down. All right, very good. Going to do the team, going to do the team play again.
Yeah, we're going to gang up on you again.
Please state the name and address. Thank you.
Patricia, up 227 Hollingsworth Manor.
Teresa, down 270 Hollingsworth Manor.
Coronation Chabwick, 100 Huntsman Drive.
Okay, I guess I'll go first, since mine's short and sweet. Um, we talked about a basketball court, and it came to my mind that we had plenty of vendors in the area, that I'm sure if I made contact with them and asked them to make donations to put up basketball courts for our, for Hollingsworth Manor boys and girls, I was wondering if maybe we can get an approval for a space on the land over there, if I can get these vendors to donate for the community. And I'm sure S&amp;M Paving, you know, the owner who owns West End Gardens, would make a donation. Um, if I can get this done, can we get an approval for some land, like by the swings or the playground over there, or maybe in the field that's out there, to put a basketball court up, keep all the kids over there? The police can watch, drive right through, and know where all the teenage boys are.
I think, uh, Chief, you were looking at, at a little bit of that, and I think we have to run everything through Gene Minner, as far as to make sure it's our town property.
Are you talking about on the creek side of Hollings?
Yes.
Yeah, there actually used to be a basketball court down there.
Yeah, there was, and a transport.
The problem that I think we had was, um, we couldn't maintain the court, it kept getting vandalized, and people were breaking glass on the asphalt. I think after a good bit of that, the, the town decided to just eliminate the basketball. Or how many years ago was that?
And we'd be more than willing. I live right on Road 12, on Road B.
Well, I would certainly say I'd be in favor of, uh, moving to a different...
I would really appreciate it, and we would maintain it, keep it clean.
We have a, we have a community that's trying to come together.
Yes.
For the, for the youth, um, and work with our local police, and I've got to give them a big thumbs up, because they're making a difference in our area.
Big difference.
And, um, you know, it, it's going to take time.
I may have to cut back 10 officers for the budget.
Then that means I have to step out my door and do my job.
I gotta, I gotta bring those numbers down. It's either, it's either to keep them up, or, uh...
Then I, then I guess I'll become the community police.
Yeah, there you go.
Um, I, I just want to give them a big thumbs up. And as far as, um, you know, the public, the public works, they, uh, they came out. Donnelly came out working with the chief. Got to give him, he stood behind me. I went in his office, I talked with him. We assessed the lighting out there. It's brighter. I have a girl that comes home now that's not scared to come home. It's much brighter.
So, we got the lighting up already?
Um, we have some...
Wow.
It's not done yet, but there is, it is brighter in the area that she walks through. So, I was glad to see that, and, uh, we have some actual ad lights, I think, that are going to be happening, so, um, just glad to hear about the Bass Masters, of course, because we had mentioned the fishing tournament, um, for the youth. And I would like to know who is actually responsible for picking up the trash and large items when tenants are evicted or moved? Who is responsible? Because they came out, Donnelly came out, they assessed it, they had three dump, dump trucks. Four go out. But I'm noticing that some people that's moved, that's back. It's just there. I know we only have trash picked up one time a week.
Well, I can tell you, it's very difficult not to leave, not to remove it. So, if we have to remove it, we're going to remove it. We just can't have it sitting there. Dan, you got a, a comment, uh, charge?
Yeah. What happens is if there's an eviction, and we're made aware of it, if it's blocking the street, it's blocking the sidewalk, we'll pick it up, and then we'll charge the owner.
It's a nice work, and this needs, this needs to have them, the landlords, and make them take responsibility for the property. I'm sorry, but that's just the way it's going to be.
Now, I have a question.
Yes.
And, and once again, don't get mad at me when I ask this question. Of course, I, I think you realize that I was standing there with my, I was in the manor for many years with my sister Peggy, and, uh, now as I, I get a little bit older and I, I look back at Hollingsworth Manor in general, and I think about Row A, Row B, uh, Row 1, Row 2, Row 3, Row 4. Would there be any thought about ever changing the name? Changing the name of the streets?
Yes.
Would there be an advantage or disadvantage? What do you think?
I think that would be a real idea.
I think it would be a excellent idea.
Can you name a new face?
Yes.
Because people, we are certain street names, and it's, oh, don't like that.
Well, that's right, and I think it's part of changing the image. I think we're making a huge step right now of changing the image, and I think that this could be part of the whole program. So, give it some thought. I think that it's kind of went around our group to think about it a little bit, and, but it's going to have to be buy-in by the neighborhood, but I think it would be a wonderful thing.
Absolutely. We, we have supporters, but we're going to keep our, our community meetings, we're going to keep small right now. We have to know who do we win and who to keep out at this point with the way it is in our community. We don't want somebody there just for the ears of gaining information, or ruining, ruining what we are actually trying to do there, so...
Listen, we've done so much in the last couple of weeks.
Yes, you have.
Wow.
And, and I praise, I praise the town for that, I really do.
They were right outside my house, and they, well, I call him George, but he's one of your detectives. And, um, he had pulled up outside my house, and he pulled a guy over on a bicycle who rides through there constantly. I don't know if he lives there or not. And right outside my house, he asked him what his name was, and the guy got really ignorant. Three police officers showed up. They told him, "If you don't like this now, you're not going to like it when the neighborhood takes it back." And I looked at him like, "Yes." So, when the guy left, I thanked the officers, because all my grandchildren seen that happen.
Very nice.
And that made them think that they're safer to be able to play and not have somebody approach them, because as you know, it wasn't pedophiles, a lot of drug dealers in the neighborhood, and I do check the list, so...
Thank you.
I know where that's at.
Very good. Do we have anything else?
No. I just wanted to present and say thank you for standing behind us because we are...
Come back next week.
Oh, we're going to be back.
Thank you.
We told you we'd be back.
I know.
You told me that, Rob.
I'm loving this.
Next meeting, I'm going to let you know who I got as vendors.
All right, that's perfect.
And break that basketball court.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to say anything for the good of the town of Elton? Mr. Litschberg, come on down.
This thing just came to mind. I didn't make any notes, and I've got four things that remind me about getting the three and getting the four.
That's the medicine. That's the medicine.
I raised my hand for when I told the Karen... I don't think most people understand what that franchise meant. You know, I mean, you or the board would know, but the county were the ones that implemented that franchise. I don't think, excuse me, those people in the audience realize that.
Yeah, exactly what it is, is, uh, Gene, you can give me the exact date, but I think it was 2004, 2005?
Seven-ish.
Seven. Around 2007, the county commissioners changed the, uh, I, I want to say urban growth, uh, plan area, comprehensive plan, and what they did is, the north part of Elton, they gave all the water service rights to Artesian Water.
They want to do that, don't they?
Yeah, Artesian Water, and, uh, can, can we ask everyone to... You can go out in the hallway. I'm just picking up all the static on the microphone. So, the, uh, we've, the, the county gave a franchise agreement across the top and to what we call Elton West, which is everything from the YMCA toward northeast belongs to Artesian now. The town of Elton has no ability, no, we cannot, uh, go out at the service water to Elton West or Elton North. Now, we can still go to the Delaware Line, and we can take water as far south as we want to go, uh, but we can provide sewer in all those areas. But the, uh, the county did pass that in 2007, and it's really crossed our, I mean, we're tied with this. And, and I, uh, I know that the town of northeast, the county, uh, has, has, uh, just allowed a franchise agreement around northeast, and also around the town of Perryville. The town of northeast is in a little different position than what we were at the time, but they're going to challenge it. Uh, they're going to challenge this franchise agreement, uh, from, from Artesian, which could benefit the town of Elton.
Well, that explains it, because a lot of people didn't understand what was going on with that.
But Jim was right. If it's not corrected in our charter, then we're doing, I mean, I'll even go a step further, and I'll even mention, you know, we approved the, the other Bell Hill project up there, and we're allowing them to serve water up there, so there could be some things that we're in violation of, and I'll tell you, we could be based upon that, if it, if[1798.13] be based upon that, if it, if it comes out that way.
I was going to bring it up. Getting back to the grass and so forth, New York has their own service, but they've got the trucks, one guy on the truck has got the lifts and so forth, but they have the large containers from just lawn debris, period. I mean, that's how they get rid of theirs. I've talked to you about the lawn debris. I called Public Works on a Tuesday, and I requested when they were going to start to pick up. I was told the 15th of April. So, I did put the things I had out, I kept them under a pine tree, this doesn't grow any grass anyhow, put it out on a Thursday prior to picking up on Friday. Well, they didn't get there for two weeks, and now the grass is dead there. No big deal, it'll come back. My front yard, the same thing. Now, I came home on Sunday after church, that pile was gone. I don't know whether the ferry came and got it, or whether, did you come and get it?
I did not.
Because we talked about it.
I know. I don't know what happened.
It was gone Sunday, I have no idea what happened.
I don't know why, I got to get it out of my wife's car.
But they didn't bring the rest, the rest up until the following Friday. That was number two, was that two?
Two and three was the Bell Hill.
Okay. Now, getting back to kids jumping off the bridge. Couple of years ago, we agreed that that should be, you and I agreed that that should be dredged. What has been done about that? Nothing, nothing, okay. But that would eliminate, I mean, I'm not, certainly not an engineer, but common sense tells me, when you've got a natural dam built up, this side of the creek is this wide, the other side of that bridge is like that, it's a natural dam. If they cleaned that, it would eliminate a lot of your problems.
The good news is, I did see a permit that the M.D. or the, we're going to get a permit that we can do the maintenance now? Did you see that? It was only for the race, it wasn't for Delaware.
It wasn't, it was for the, but also too for the, the ditch along the border.
We need to get them to expand that, and then we'll be able to get that...
Well, that's total water up.
It's the race.
Yeah.
So, that's total water up to that bridge.
It is. Yeah, I got a call on that before.
And this is, this is probably, going back to Dan, they replaced a stop sign on the corner of Gilpin and Long Island Lane, and he put a stone there, I'm telling you, it was, well, Dan knows how big, it was as big as this chair, Dan, am I right or not?
Yeah, sir.
Well, tractor trailer came around, and it's down in the ground, it's gone. And it ran right over, the stop sign's still there, but...
Fifty-fifty.
Well, maybe you can put another one there so you won't have to cut the stuff on that. Was that four X?
That was four X, four X. Thank you, Bob. Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Mayor Brown?
I just wanted, I was here a couple of weeks ago, and I said something about the trees, the grass, etc., and I wanted to compliment the town for getting those trees cut down over there last week. The grass is nice trimmed along the creek, and could be a little bit, you know, but it's a move forward, and I want to thank you. Just a clarification on that water situation. I'm not opposed to that annexation, but if you don't get, you know, if the lawyer's going to tell you, if the papers don't mesh, then all of a sudden, you know, it's just like, if they got to...
It was a valid point.
Yeah, so, it's just, and you might want, you might, yeah, I still think, though, that northeast will win that lawsuit. The Public Service Commission gave a statement on the first two hearings they had, but then the town northeast couldn't put any more money into it, because I was somewhat involved a little bit with that. They can't take away the anything the towns had to do to encourage people to annex, you know, that's what I'm trying to point, I'm trying to make, it's our product.
Anyone else have anything to say tonight? Hearing none, we're going to actually have a closed meeting this evening. I need a motion for a closed meeting to consider the marketing of public securities and to consult with counsel to obtain a legal advice on a legal matter. Got a motion? A second, yeah, a second. All in favor? I'd like to ask everyone to leave the building. Thank you.